And we can.
Right, so we absolutely can.
Yeah, we can. And we can, and we can make you the mayor next Tuesday. I mean, six of one have a dozen on the other at this point.
How is what you're proposing a compromise?
Yeah, I don't see the compromise.
What we're proposing is that we all have an equal share in deciding who fills the vacancy that Diane Pappen has left. And then we continue to follow the protocols that we've outlined. Seems like that is a definition of compromise to me. It's one for one.
So in order to follow protocol, we have to first not follow protocol?
Well, we're already out of bounds here. I mean, we've already broken protocol. We were supposed to make this decision yesterday. I mean, it's just fundamentally the case. We're also in uncharted territory in that, you know, the charter wasn't written around district elections. It certainly wasn't written against having three new council people at once. I mean, there's so many places that protocol's already been broken, but yeah, it has. You can't deny it.
I do deny it and disagree.
Okay, well, you can agree to disagree.
I imagine a true compromise would be to agree to follow the protocol related to the rotational mayor after undergoing a process of selecting a fifth member, but even that has problems. So I probably shouldn't even say that. I think I would like to make a motion that we continue this to December 8th. As per city attorney suggestion, out of an interest in giving staff a break.
What is this? What would, what's the scope of what you would want to continue?
Sorry?
Could you fill in what you mean by this?
This item.
I could interject.
Thank you.
Try and articulate what I think your motion is. Are you suggesting adjourning this regular meeting to Thursday, December 8th, 7:00 PM, council chambers to continue this discussion?
Potentially with the inclusion of the list of
And then preceded by a
Yes.
preliminary, very preliminary discussion of who the candidates are for the council vacancy. Understanding that the process still has to be completed on December 12th and that no decisions or conclusions should be made. I would add that that discussion, I think, would need to precede any discussion on the question of the mayor and the deputy mayor. And because it's an adjourned regular meeting, you know, I look to the city clerk and city manager for this too. I mean, I think you would need to have a special meeting, a separate special meeting before the adjourned regular meeting. Because you can't add an agenda item to adjourned regular meeting. I don't know if it's really going to make a difference in the discussion, but then it serves to follow the Brown Act by not, by scheduling a special meeting on one item and then continuing the adjourned regular meeting after that. Is that your motion?
A question I would have comes back to, is it fair to the applicants?
No, it's a good question because you know, the applicants still need to be interviewed by the city council. But I think that if in this preliminary overview evaluation of the of the applications, it can be framed as just preliminary, subject to further discussion by the council on December 12th and interviews at that time.
I think alternatively, you know, to you to address that issue, you know, you'll know on the 8th who is applied, right? And so you don't necessarily need to have any discussion because I do agree it. You really have to thread the needle on that discussion, right? To ensure that the process remains equitable for all of the candidates. So, you know, with that said, at a bare minimum, you'll know who is applied. And so you may have a feel for whether there could be some consensus generated on the 12th. But reconvene this discussion, you know, adjourn until the 8th. With persona's point being, we're no worse off than we are right now. And you get, you know, a few days to think a little bit more. You know, I don't, it's 2:30. I think if we're here till 4:30, we're still having the same discussion. And so we, I think we passed the definition of insanity a couple hours ago. So I think it would be wise to to adjourn, to continue this until the 8th under, you know, just the auspices of we're no worse off than we are right now. And we can come back fresh on Thursday evening.
Thank you, city manager. Yes, that is my motion.
So, well, if I can clarify, so then your motion is simply to adjourn this regular meeting to Thursday, December 8th, 7:00 PM, council chambers. This has got no preliminary discussion about council candidates, no special meeting. It's just this. Understanding that you're going to have sort of more information in the back of your mind. You'll have the list of candidates, but there will be no discussion about it. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, no, I was thinking about including the special meeting.
Okay, so you wanted, okay. So you wanted to have a special meeting on the 8th, then followed by this adjourned regular meeting? Which you can do.
That just requires, it seems really unfair to the applicants to me.
You don't have to do it. You could simply
Okay, no, it would just be moving then to adjourn until the 8th. No, no.
Okay, understood.
Nothing further. My motion, is there a second?
I second it.
My motion is second, Patrice.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
I'm not available on 8th.
Councilmember Newsom.
How does it work if she's not available?
Discuss that now.
Well, my calendar.
So you would still have a quorum on the 8th. So you could have a meeting, but I mean, if Councilmember Lee is not available, that that makes things more difficult. Is Councilmember Lee, I mean, if you're not going to have it on, instead of the 8th, well, you could do it on, you know, this is not less than ideal, but you know, you could have it on Friday. For example, like during, you could have it at any time you wish, like during, during the day, you could have it in the late afternoon. Perhaps Councilmember Lee is available then, but I think it's important to have all four council members at the adjourned regular meeting. I think.
May I withdraw my motion at this time and we can maybe discuss a better date?
Is the 9th available?
Unfortunately not.
Are there any dates between after the 7th and before the 12th that you're available? Or there's the 13th?
I'm kind of, I'm interested in kind of switching gears and proposing a different line of of hopeful, hopefully some solution, solutions for consideration. You know, I think I've made it really clear that a departure from the rotational system for me is is an affront to our process. And and while I believe that it's really important for us to do business and find consensus, and I'm committed to doing that. I appreciate from the council's perspective where we are so divided that there's an interest in having some guardrails up in terms of that decision unilaterally being determined by one person. Of course, the charter empowers that to happen. That is actually what what the current process and rules are, right? And if we seek to change that, I think that there's very clear steps that we can take to do that. However, in the interest of compromise, I would consider negotiating some checkpoints in terms of the use of the tiebreaker vote in determining a fifth council member. So what that could look like, for example, is I would only exercise a tiebreaker after three votes, three rounds of votes, for example, something like that. That would, that would at least give everyone, you know, in the room, everyone, you know, on the dais, confidence that we would deliberate with, you know, with a sense of a unified goal, right? And me saying, I do not want to be tiebreaker. I want, I don't want to wait 30 days and be the only person deciding. I want us to figure this out, right? What are some parameters that could be negotiated so that we can come to a decision? Again, any, any decision that we make is is curbing the power of the mayor that's never been curbed for any other council member in any other mayor position. And I want to surface that, that this is a gross inequity that is being bestowed on me right now. But I'm willing, I'm willing to have this conversation to try to move us forward. You are, you are trying to curb the power of the mayorship for me. The council member, the sole senior council member from District 2 that hasn't had representation in 20 years. You are sitting on a decision at 2:40 AM when my kids have gone to sleep. Who did not get to see me voting in as mayor on the 128th year of this city's history. But I guess that's the way we're doing business. So if, if that's your line, I'm trying to come closer to your line. I said, I'm, I would welcome you to join me as deputy mayor. That did not seem to be amenable. Now, we have honed in closer to, I think, the real issue, which is your concern for the powers of the mayor. Again, these powers of the mayor have never been checked for any other mayor. And it doesn't seem like you're even interested in contemplating them being checked for future mayors.
Who said that?
When you were asked, when you were asked, would you want to pursue an amendment? You said you declined.
What I said was I was focused on the next two weeks. That absolutely is different than should we look at an amendment going forward?
We can play it back, but what you said was, no, I'm not interested in that.
No, that was not what I said, and that was certainly not my intention. But never mind, we are here. I would consider these two things separate, that there is I don't believe in general, the mayor should have that power. But that is, that is one thing I'm concerned about the next two weeks. And so.
So again, what you're saying is that in, okay, to use your words exactly, you do not believe that in general, the mayor should have tiebreaker vote in filling a vacancy. That is a departure from the current code, from the current, excuse me, from the current charter. You, you are proposing a change to the powers that we bestow on the mayor.
I am proposing no such thing. It is 2:45 in the morning. I would not, I would not make that kind of proposal this time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you in general did not agree. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So we have to figure out how we get through the next two weeks.
Right. So the next, so what I'm suggesting, stay with me here. We're here to deliberate. What I'm suggesting is now, do I think that this is right? Do I think this is fair? No, but isn't it a compromise? It is. I'm saying, what is a proposal that will get us through, as you said, the next two weeks? And the primary concern that we've honed in on is a discomfort with the mayor exercising the tiebreaker vote. And the proposal that I've put on the table is I, I've said in good faith, my intention is to work and build consensus and to find a fifth person that can be the bridge builder, that can help us thread the needle, right? Those are all the things I've said. But I'm also saying in addition to that now, what if I were to say I will not exercise tiebreaker until the third vote or until after three votes, which would be the fourth vote? That would give us three rounds of voting, three rounds to kind of store it out and make the sausage and try to figure it out, right? And then only at the fourth vote, at the absolute last resort, we would have a tiebreaker.
So, and maybe this is just my lack of knowledge. My understanding is that the tiebreaker doesn't come into effect until 30 days after. If the decision can't be made and it goes for 30 days, then the mayor decides. So there is a 30-day period between the initial meeting where there is no decision and the final. So you could take the three votes or you could say, we come back again and again. Or, I mean, there are different ways of going about what you're talking about. And I appreciate your, you know, your thinking about it, but I guess I would, it would probably be ideal for all of us if we said the concept is that there is some kind of guardrail put around it, but that right now is probably not the right time to think about the details. I just, from a fresh brain perspective. I don't know what you think.
What do you think, Councilmember Newsom?
I think we were so close to adjourning for three days. I have no new ideas. Totally deadlocked.
I make another suggestion.
Please.
It's just an idea. But the applications for the council member vacancy, they're due on December 7th at 5:00 PM. If you wanted to, you could adjourn this regular meeting until Wednesday, Wednesday evening, all the applications would be in. There wouldn't necessarily be an agendaized discussion about it. I think based on your last motion that you withdrew, you could simply continue adjourn this regular meeting until Wednesday. Have some time to think about it. And then also you would see what applications had come in. But it would still be limited to a discussion about this decision for the mayor and deputy mayor. And it could help you, this group, move forward in deciding, is there, is there room for some compromise?
What do you think, Councilmember Lee?
Are you available on Wednesday, December 7th?
I guess, I mean, I, I'm not really sure what it gains us. Different from just going forward with the 12th and not having, you know, not having a tiebreaker, you know, if if we legitimately cannot come to any decision, you know, about mayor, about the, you know, about the the, filling the vacancy. That, you know, that, that would be the you know, that would be the true deadlock, right? Is that we would just not be able to do business.
Well, it seems like over the past 10 minutes or so, there was some degree of interest in a compromise solution whereby there was, you know, some commitment that there would, you know, be a, you know, a modified use of the tiebreaker, right? Where it would be after X number of votes. So, but there was concern about at this time of night, sort of everyone's brain function, as you can probably hear from me as I'm struggling to articulate this. I think the upside is, is if we, if we start fresh on the 7th, that we can perhaps hash out that and come to some, some conclusion prior to the 12th. And again, it sort of, we're in no worse position than we are now.
So point of clarification, what you're suggesting is on Wednesday evening, the 7th, after the applications have been received, that we have a meeting to see whose names are, have been submitted. No, no.
No, what I'm suggesting is
Just continue this.
Is simply continuing this meeting. I think the main benefit at this stage is just having some fresher minds and having a chance to think about it. You will also, by the way, know who is applied for the vacancy.
Right.
It's not a discussion item for the council under this proposal. But that would be background, sort of factual information. Perhaps it could encourage the council to reach a decision on this question. Would simply be continuing this, adjourning this meeting to the 7th.
Right. And we could either feel good about it or say, okay, we're going into the 12th with the same challenges. Either way, anything's possible.
I'm kind of inclined to just rip off the Band-Aid and go, go forward on the 12th. You know, I'm, I'm sitting here. I could keep going. You know, I'm, I'm here to make a decision tonight. You know, I just, you know, I, I think that it's, I think as we, as we continue down the path of, of what, you know, what's actually underneath this. What's in between the lines, right, is, is this decision of curbing the, the powers of the mayor. And, and the the lack of faith in, you know, in our ability to work as a team. I, you know, what I, what I think is right, you know, what I think, what I think we should all agree is fair, is that the rotational mayor tradition, it balances, it shares this power across all geographic regions. Right? And in a line of succession, that's now drawn by straws, right? It couldn't be more random or more fair. So there's, there is fairness built into this process because the rotational mayor position rotates every single year. And next year, it will be somebody different and there will be different decision points every year. And so, you know, I just, I, I, I find it, you know, really important to point out that what is being proposed is fundamentally different from the way that we have conceived of the mayorship and the rules that have been written for us to follow today. What you're proposing and what I'm even contemplating What you're proposing and what I'm even contemplating is, you know, is hamstringing the, you know, the powers of the mayor. That has never been asked of any other mayor. In the interest of fairness, how do you justify this request? Taking the long view.
I would like to make a motion that we continue this discussion on the 7th in the evening. And see if we have consensus to that. Is there a second to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the data.
At this, the 7th, I think, was what we were talking about in the evening.
I'll second it.
Can I clarify the motion? Is your motion to adjourn the regular meeting until 7:00 PM on Wednesday, December 7th?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
That's the motion you seconded?
I second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
No.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries 3-1.
May I make a motion to adjourn then? Is that the next?
The next item on the agenda
Thank you.
is reports and announcements, which the council can skip if it wishes. And then after that is adjournment.
I make a motion that we skip reports and announcements. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, the hour is late. Let me correct myself. You have already adjourned the regular meeting.
Right.
So you are done.
Okay. Thank you.